Thanks, Hannah. Called a meeting to order. This is the Monroe Planning Commission, regular meeting for Monday, February 12, 2024. It is 7:00 PM. Hannah, would you call Wolf Morris, please?
I would be happy to. Commissioners present and establishing a quorum. Commissioners Blair, Bull, Dawkins, Lo, Lockhart, Nugent, and Petrino.
Thanks, Hannah. I'm going to go ahead and read everything related to the public comments now that it's kind of newer this year. This is a time for people to speak to the Planning Commission in person on issues related to the city of Monroe. Accept those issues subject to a public hearing. When invited to speak, please approach the podium and state your name and association with the city or area residents. The timer will then be started. Each speaker is limited to three minutes. Public comment is a limited public forum. For a public comment, it's limited to in-person comment only. Written comments can be emailed to hmaner@monroeau.gov and must be received by 4:00 PM the day of the meeting for advanced distribution to Planning Commission. Written comments received at the commission meeting will be distributed to the Planning Commission at the commission meeting. Per the Planning Commission rules of procedure, written public comments will not be read into the record. So we have members of the public here. Would you like to speak?
Just, yeah, briefly.
So if you wouldn't mind.
Here?
Yeah, the podium.
These are our lines.
Are we doing the podium, Hannah, or?
Or you can take a seat next to Liz.
So that Holes will pick you up and incorporate your voice.
Sounds good. My name is Susan Davis. I'm with Monrover Real Estate. And I've been a real estate agent here in Monroe for the last 28 years, 29 in June. So I know the land here really well. And I'd like to offer my services to anybody here when it comes to evaluating the total lands and the comp plan as it pertains to proposed zoning and development potential. I did put together a letter with some information specifically regarding displacement and gentrification for the downtown area of Monroe. And I brought a couple of copies for our new members. And these should have been emailed out to you guys back the end of October. But I'm happy to, you know, provide you a card if you didn't get it, I can send it to you. There's lots of reference material in there. So, yeah. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay. Hannah, anyone in the room waiting?
Nope.
Okay. Move on to approval of minutes. Does everybody have a chance to review the minutes?
I move that we approve the minutes from the December 11th, 2023. Is that right?
It is.
No, wrong one.
These are the January.
January 8th. I move that we approve the minutes from the January 8th, 2024.
I second it.
Oh, good.
In progress. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Great. Hannah, did you get the seconds?
Please say aye.
Oh, Dawkins. Oh. That one's me.
All the people say yes.
Thank you. All right. New business. Kate has 2024 comprehensive plan.
Yeah, so we're having a little technical difficulties. So we're going to try to pull up the presentation from your agenda. It is in the agenda. If, oh, perfect. There we go. So next slide. This is really starting to walk you through what to expect this year. Each, and when I get to your program of work, which is the next agenda item, you'll see we have a pretty aggressive schedule of bringing things to the Planning Commission for review. And so tonight, it's just kind of going over the framework of this new document. And then a short discussion of the guiding principles, which are community advisory council. Committee, sorry, committee, not council. Review to the end of last year. It's been refined a few times for the guiding principles. Next slide. One. So the existing 2015 plan had eight broad goals. And each goal had a series of policies. And the policies were repeated on those eight goals if they were, if they applied to multiple goals. And so one of the things that we're trying to do with this plan is make it a little bit more succinct. And so we're also using Imagine Monroe. That is the guiding principle from here on out. And so now we're moving to just a little bit of a different framework. And then the policy goals and policies will actually be within each element or chapter now as opposed consolidated in the front. And this is, we're trying to reduce confusion. There are still the possibility that you're going to have an overlap with policies, but we're trying to figure out a better way of identifying that. That instead of repeating it, there might be more of a summary at the end of that section. And so I just realized the existing goals and policies are actually at the very end of this presentation. So my apologies if we can go through the last two pages just to give you a refresher on what they were back in 2015. There we go. I'm not going to read through them, but they, this was, in 2015, we didn't have Imagine Monroe, but the work was, my understanding, was starting to get underway or they were already having conversations that we needed to move to a larger umbrella policy for the entire, for the city. And so the first one was talking about a safe and secure environment. The second one was talking about our natural environment and resources. The third one was talking, really, this is your economic development one, talking about regional centers, looking for opportunity, employment. Number four was talking about just ensuring we had the right mix of land uses, both from an economic and a residential standpoint. Goal number five was specific to housing. Goal number six was talking about our utility and transportation infrastructure. Oh, you did it for six. Seven was talking about our park facilities. And eight was talking about downtown. And so those were then followed by these 200-plus policies. Some were repeated. And I'm hopeful that our consultants had asked us to go through and start doing strike through the ones that needed to be removed. We may or may not have that for you at your next meeting, starting to consolidate and starting to identify where we're missing policies. So hopefully that will be at our next meeting. If not, it will be one of your first meetings in March. So the 2024 plan, again, we're using Imagine Monroe as our guiding principle. And behind that, we have four, excuse me, we have four guiding principles now after our vision, which is Imagine Monroe. Next slide is Imagine Monroe. Don't have it memorized yet, you'll have it in a lot of your documents. The mayor talks about this a lot quite frequently. And then going into how the document is going to be laid out. Oh, never mind. So it's still the policy framework, goals, policies, and actions. Actions get into, like, the transportation plan. We have a six-year capital, or, excuse me, six-year transportation improvement plan. We have the six-year capital improvement plan. So those are the actions. It's directing us as we're starting to talk about budget items. And so now I do want to bring you to the refined guiding principles, which, again, the CAC looked at at the end of last year. They're in no particular order. The first one is equity-centered. And this, the original part of this was the policy statement that the Planning Commission prepared with the definition. Since this went out, I've received additional refinements internally. So this is the basis, but it's going to be, my suspicion is it's going to be continued to be refined. I am taking this to the city council at the end of the month with all of the goals. So they'll also have their say. Come on in. Do you want me to read through these or do you want to read them on your own? Do you want me to proceed? Good? Nope? Okay. What about online, Liz or Bob? Okay. So the second one is connected and active. This is getting, again, this is talking about our transportation. And again, this has also been refined, all of these. So the original principles were, we received a lot of positive and feedback on how they could be better refined. So these incorporate those revisions. Okay, next. Safe and accessible. This is really getting at that last line of Imagine Monroe, where everyone feels safe and they belong. The next one is local and community-driven. Gathering spots, participation in government. And then the final one is affordable housing. Or, excuse me, not affordable housing, it's all housing, but including affordable and a variety of types. And this one, I just wanted to point out that the feedback I had received more recently actually includes, the last, or two lines from the last, really starting to include a list because that, not limiting it to just detached and attached housing, also acknowledging that we have shelter, emergency housing, and incorporating accessory dwelling units because there's the high probability that that will become much more common in the city of Monroe with the recent state changes. So that is an introductory, yeah?
Is there going to have questions?
Absolutely.
So I know that, I saw this with the community, sorry, it's action.
CAC, yeah.
Yeah, okay.
Committee.
And we haven't seen it again after we had made some suggestions. And so is there going to be one more chance for CAC to have, like?
Yes.
Input? Okay. I feel like they did get a lot of what we had mentioned because they incorporated the Imagine Monroe. It's kind of hard because it's not like in the same order that Imagine Monroe goes in. But if you do isolate them, you can see where they're there. I still feel like it's missing a little bit of like, not emotion, but some sort of, like, there's no friendly and neighborly, like, in here. And I feel like it's missing that somehow. Okay, it's talking a lot about, we do this, we do that, but it doesn't, doesn't give me that feeling that Imagine Monroe does the same, so.
Yeah, Hannah, it's kind of a big question. So we'll see if you can answer it right now.
Okay.
So obviously, the comprehensive plan is essentially, the city comes up with the goals that it wants to meet. And then the plan is kind of ensuring that policy and code and stuff aligns to open opportunities for that to, that those goals to come to fruition. There's still pieces, though, because they're out of city control. We can't force a business to come to Monroe. We can't force developers to come and build the housing that we hope goes on this plot, on this plot. However, through, because it's, obviously, it's a 20-year plan. So we update it every halfway through. What, what things happen between now and the next update to specifically look at and measure where we're at with the goals and asking the questions of like, well, why aren't we meeting them? Or how can we, you know, pursue it more or any of that along the way? So the tracking is actually a new requirement for the Growth Management Act. So that's something that we have not developed yet, but will be required. And I cannot remember what the first, the first mark is for us to show how we're achieving or not achieving. That would give another opportunity to have conversation, though, of how you can better achieve through either the goals, policies, or changes in code. I can't remember if I've shared with this group before, but one of the things, I feel like the city is missing a tool, the toolbox, when it comes to housing. We used to have planned residential developments. It was taken out because there were concerns that it wasn't being done in a way that achieved what the city was trying to get, specifically with parks. But by having those types of incentives, it encourages developers because they might be getting extra units, which helps them increase their bottom line. But to do that, then we're asking for certain things. The other thing is changing our zoning code specifically with development. So if we're focusing on housing, because that's really one of the biggest things that's going to be a challenge.
It's one of the pieces that's on my mind with the six down.
Yeah.
It's the thriving downtown. Because I know there's like, there's a downtown master plan that kind of falls within. And I know, because I've asked this question, that that's kind of next on our agenda after we get through the comprehensive plan, because that hasn't been updated in 15 years. And so I look, I look at that and it talks about downtown. Like, it defines downtown as the heart of a community. But I think of our, I look at our downtown right now and I just, to be blunt, I feel like it's better than it's ever been. And I know businesses are struggling down there. And I know, you know, there's a lot of empty space down there. And so moving forward, like, that's great. It's a great goal. I think anybody in this town can tell you that they want a bustling and thriving downtown. So we put that in our goals. We make sure, you know, that there's, there's policy and coding to bring in businesses downtown. But then what? Like, then what to make sure that those goals are being met so that we actually accomplish the idea? It's not just a forever goal that, I don't know, at least for me, feels like it's lacking. But it's the same thing with housing. The last affordable housing unit built in this town was a Central River's Edge, right? Wasn't that like 2015, 2019? What was it?
2019.
19, I couldn't remember if it was this year or the 2019. So I mean, that's great. It happened not too many years after the comp plan, but then there's been no additional housing since then. And look at the crisis. And it's not unique to Monroe.
Right.
This is, there's a housing crisis everywhere. But what can we do to make sure that, yeah, we're going to have a housing goal? We're going to have big housing goals. But what, what happens between now and 2044 for the city to make sure that that goal, we're constantly striving for it and not just setting it and hoping for the best?
The Neat's Housing Action Plan has a number of things that we can do. If we were to basically follow many of those things in that Housing Action Plan, we could at least give it a shot.
Give it a shot, yeah. And again, there is stuff that's out of our control. You know, if the developers decide all of a sudden that Monroe's not the place to, I mean, there's not much, there's only so much that the city itself can do there. But we need to make sure that we, I feel we need to make sure we're doing all the things to try our best and our darndest to accomplish the goals.
Yes, absolutely.
That's a great point. And the Planning Commission has to be open to all kinds of, you know, ideas, interesting ideas of, you know, the whole day family, tax incentive, and all those kind of things. Different types of housing, cottages, everything is in the Housing Action Plan. We need to look at and encourage to give that diversity of housing.
Yeah, I was just thinking on the economic, the downtown side. The city has a contracted person who, he helps with economic development. So the city, you know, doing, doing things like that, it's not just the zoning, but having somebody who can assist in location and working with our department and building. So absolutely, I'm going to, I made a note to myself to come back with that, the new citation that has a requirement for monitoring. Some of that stuff is still going to have to be discussed on. All right, so what happens if we're not, we're not moving in, moving the needle in the right direction? But that was a really valid question.
Go ahead, Carla. Thank you for raising your hand. We don't have, since you're new, we used to have these fancy microphones that would, you know, you push the button, it'd be red. And when you called upon it, it'd green. But now if everybody just raised their hand, everyone gets a chance.
Or like the flags that they use at some times.
I just made a note to myself to purchase that with the commission.
Kind of singing background melody, the thing, and I don't know if this is really appropriate for our, our group, but talking about the downtown area and then you talk about the economic growth. So I'm not sure that this commission has very much to do with that economic growth towards down with the downtown area.
So the Planning Commission really looks at policy and, and development standards. We actually do have an Economic Development Advisory Board in addition to our contracted.
Economic development. I'm not exactly sure what his title is.
Coordinator?
Coordinator, I believe it is.
Yeah. And so I know the city, the city's done things differently over the years. When I was here back in the early 2000s, there was a lot of coordination. We had a downtown organization specifically trying to improve downtown. And unfortunately, that went away. My understanding is we do do a lot of coordination with the Chamber of Commerce. So there, there are things, but it really doesn't come to the Planning Commission. You're really looking at the policies and the development.
Look like that, I just wanted to make a quick point.
Yeah, absolutely.
And in addition to, there is a sub, there is a recent change with EDAP, Economic Development Advisory Board. Is there subcommittees that are looking at sort of different geographical areas of the city? And there's a downtown subcommittee. And one of the things that Patrick is looking at to work with that group is to try to build some momentum to put together that downtown association or some type of, of group that is specifically focused on downtown issues. And it's, it's, it's a type of organization that exists in a lot of, in a lot of cities. And just unfortunately, there hasn't been enough momentum here to get that started and keep it going. But it's, that's, that's on their, that's on their radar currently. So if you're interested in that, I would suggest taking a look at that. So how the, how the Planning Commission potentially gets involved in that? And you, when we jump ahead, looking at some of the, what we're doing work plan-wise is code amendments that might affect the land uses that are allowed and the development code pieces that are associated with downtown. And then those would come through Planning Commission for recommendations.
Thank you.
And that's all.
But talk about the, Planning Commission was responsible for the overlay, for the promenade overlay. The allowed uses to increase walkability of downtown businesses that are open during the day for people going to. So Planning Commission was responsible to try and encourage the right type of businesses in the right area to make it vibrant. It's just, we're out of control over so much. Can't control rental rates, can't control landlords, the same with property.
One after business. Are there any questions online? Okay. Any other questions or comments?
It's a good question.
Yeah, absolutely. Okay. So yes, this is going back to the CAC. The meeting is in two weeks. And it should be on your, you should have received a reminder.
It's leap day.
Oh, yeah, that's right. It's leap day.
That's the way I would.
Thursday.
Yes.
Yeah. Some of us don't work on leap year days, but I guess.
Really?
That's a holiday? Well, in some cultures it is. I'll be at the meeting.
Could you work with, we get that day off?
We have one more planning before then, right? We have another planning meeting before.
Yes, we do, we do.
It's just a community action.
Yes. It's a couple of our planning. Yeah, so the Community Action Committee is two council members, two Planning Commissioners, two members from the Economic Advisory Board, Parks Board, CHSAB, Community, I always get that wrong. Thank you. Services Advisory Board. Thank you. Somebody from the school district, the library.
Fire district.
Fire district. I'm forgetting. So it's, it's a, it's a larger work group. All right, so we'll just continue bringing things back to you as they get modified and updated. Just reading through them. Did you have any edits? Do you have any comments or concerns before we move on? Okay. And you can always email me after the fact. Can we just roll on to the next one?
Sure, we have our calendar. 2024 Annual Work Program? It's like, Kate, you're going to tell us different one's schedule or?
Yeah, and it's already been revised. So, so every year, we go through and we prepare your work program based on the council's priorities, things that we know we have to take care of. Really, the big one this year is finishing the comprehensive plan. It has to be adopted or, so we stay in compliance with state law by the end of this year. And so attached to the program of work, which I'll walk through in a second, at the very end, there's just a one-page sheet that gives you each element or chapter that I will be bringing to you for every single meeting through the rest of this year. Some of these are already moving around, as I mentioned. The Economic Advisory Board is taking the lead on that chapter. And so you will not be seeing it in March. It will most likely be coming back in July. I do need to get some more information on that, but I just learned that last week. Then going back to the full list of items that you're reviewing, again, most of this has to do with state requirements. The comprehensive plan, which I just went over. The next one is some revisions, oh, excuse me, the critical areas. So we have to update this concurrently with the comprehensive plan. So that's wetlands, steep slopes, wildlife habitat. And I'm looking at a couple of options. The state passed another law last year or two years ago that said, cities that are 25 population or less could actually adopt the counties because they do a lot more work, but it has to be compliant with GMA. Trying to see if that might be a better path for us instead of having to do the updates on our own every iteration. The concern I've heard so far, I've heard generally, it's, it's fine. There are a few areas of concern regarding critical aquifer recharge areas. So I do want to do my due diligence and see if that would work for the city or not. Part of that law is that whenever the county updates its code, ours automatically updates. And so from a work perspective, that's enticing, but it needs to work for our community. So it's a little bit on that one. The next one is, again, another state law change that happened last year. And this has to do with permitting. And so there, the changes are, they have, it used to be you had 120 days for general applications to be reviewed from the time that an application is deemed complete. Now there are three different clocks that we follow. And we have a clock to determine, which we already had, for an application being complete. The big changes are, the state specifically said these are calendar days. And it was not clear beforehand. And so some jurisdictions were using work, or, yeah, workdays, some were using calendar days. The other part that's new is that if we don't meet those dates, we have to return the application fees. So this is pretty big and a lot of training will be going on with planning staff. It does not include billing permits. It really is land use. So subdivisions, site plan approval, conditionally used permits. So that's also a priority that has to be, it really needs to be adopted by the end of this year because those new timelines begin January 1st of 2025. And we're also required to, another part of this is providing documentation of how the city did on meeting those new deadlines. And the first report, though, is due January 2025, based on what we're doing this year. So Hannah and I are coordinating on how we're going to do that. There's, the state's putting out some guidance on what that should look like. The next one, accessory dwelling units. So this is also a state change a couple of years ago. Amy Bright, one of our planners, has already been drafting this. I think I've mentioned this a couple of times. I'm very optimistic that we will be able to make these changes before the end of this year. The big change is the state said you cannot require the owner to live in the primary or the secondary house. They call that the occupancy requirement, so that goes away. If the unit is close to a major transit stop, you cannot require off-street parking. They increased the size so the city doesn't get to decide how big these units are. It's 1,000 square feet. The state is also saying that if the, if possible, you can have two dwelling, two accessory dwelling units per detached residential lot. So some, some big changes coming from that perspective. The city, the city still has the authority to determine what coverage, setbacks. And so if you don't meet that criteria, you're not going to get the two units. You still, the city still has some ability to determine how residential development is permitted. Oh, okay. So the, the next one is talking about middle housing and affordable housing. So this one is actually, or. So this one is actually, we're, we're making a couple of changes. So it's like the next, so that one, and then with the multifamily tax exemption and the affordable housing chapters. So these three are somewhat related. Talking with Anita Marrero, who's our senior planner, she is the lead for this project. And talking with her, we, we really do need to focus on that middle housing. It could, and we're still talking about what form that's gonna be moving forward. But in order to accommodate that, which is really the priority, the multifamily tax exemption is gonna be pushed to later this year. And so it really, most of that work is probably gonna happen in 2025 to ensure that we're consistent with the middle housing, which is a priority for the state as well as Puget Sound Regional Council. And then we have a code cleanup, which is being combined with the downtown commercial zoning district. So you may have heard, the city has purchased a couple of properties. And in order to protect the city's investments, along with a couple of other concerned citizens, we are looking at changing the zoning table. So that is being incorporated into phase one of code cleanup. And that is when the city adopted Title 22 in 2019, there were some Scribner errors, there are some items that our city attorney has identified that we need to modify. So that, the downtown zoning code will be added to the code cleanup. Somewhat on expedited review process. We're hoping to have that completed by summer of this year. Moving on. Oh, and then the last two are those ongoing. The planning commission does review the capital improvement plan annually as part of the budget process. And then we have the standalone, residents can apply for a comprehensive plan. This year I decided to start a list of all the items that are not going to be, that are not currently on our work plan, but are items of concern. I know Randy had a bunch last year, so I'm hoping that I have captured them. And with that, I am happy to answer questions and/or add to the future lists. Yes.
Regarding the citizen-initiated applications for comp plan amendment, I was just wondering why it's so late in the year? Because there could be some citizen-initiated ideas that we would wanna be looking at throughout the comp plan process.
So it's, it's actually an independent process from this big update, and it's done like that intentionally. What some cities do is they say, we're not taking any applications for the 10-year of the, the 10-year update comp plan. We have chosen not to do that. So anything that comes in in July would actually be processed the following year, so in 2025. And that was done intentionally. I would say, though, if residents are interested during this 10-year update, there are going to be plenty of opportunities, beginning with the environmental, the draft environmental impact statement, which should be coming out at the end of March. So that's one touch point. And then all of the, will be out in the public again. The spring with, here's what we heard, this is what the plan is looking like. And then we have the formal adoption process. If it's somewhat, if it can fit within the, fit within the proposal, there is some flexibility, but if it is very different, it would be processed most likely. Not most likely, it would be processed with a 2025 update.
No, two things. When it says December 2023, then August or November 24.
Apologies.
24, 24, yep. And then the second thing, and this is just a minor thing because I'm gonna be hyper-aware of the equity piece, all along this with language. When it says citizen-initiated applications, is that a name that comes from elsewhere? Or can we change that to resident-initiated?
We, we can absolutely change that.
And those, those initiated applications annually, right?
Absolutely.
So it's not intentionally put after the comp plan, it's an annual process. So you have a chance to apply annually.
Do we have any from last year?
We received zero. We had two, two city, but no resident initiated. And that's, we put, just to make you aware, we do two postings in the paper. We put it on the Facebook page, we put it on the city website. So trying to say, if something that you would like changed, here's your opportunity, and it is an annual process.
Posted in Washington.
Yep. Any questions online? Nope, okay.
Okay. All right.
Okay. That's all I have for you.
All right, so, well, just one more thought. So is there anything, anything we need to worry about for deadlines that we need to worry about city council deadlines? I see, I have one thing on here, but it's not due until June 2025, or recommendations city council. I don't plan on who we are. Is there anything else that we need to worry about? Oh, here's a, yeah. Can you give me anything? Because I'd like to make sure that I'm aware of, you know, keeping us on schedule. So we don't defer too many meetings or say, can we bring it back to discussion? If we have a hard deadline, we have to push it, recommendations city council. I want to make sure that we're getting everything.
Not yet. As Amy, Anita and I are preparing our code amendments, we will be bringing to you a schedule, so it'll be more detailed. And I recently put together another one-pager for the comp plan that includes the planning commission public hearing, which I tentatively got scheduled in October. That needs to be moved on to the council at first meeting in November. So anyway, I'll, I'll share that with you so you can see that. But the code amendments, I'm still working on those specific schedules, so we don't get in trouble. Yeah.
Thank you. Next item is our community development department report. This one is December. We missed that since we didn't have a meeting in the January. So I'll leave it to Hannah to give us the details.
All right. So the community development, December 2023 monthly report, our last report for the year. We will start with the pre-application meetings that we had in December. We had three meetings in December. One was for proposed cricket fields out at 21509 State Route 2. You may know this property as the East Monroe property. They're off State Route 2. That's a proposal to construct recreational cricket grounds and a 15,000-square-foot indoor practice facility. Another pre-application meeting was for a proposal to open a cafe at 102 East Main Street. That's in the Dahl of Key building, right there at Lewis and Main Downtown. And another proposal for a car museum at 126 East Main Street, proposing to install 12-foot glass door on the side of the building and open a private car museum, car display with one or two offices. I do want to clarify, so for pre-applications, that does not mean it's an actual application that came in, that comes in. It is somebody that has an idea of something that they want to achieve. And the only reason I want to bring it to your attention is this came up at the council a couple of meetings ago. So we want to be very clear with you. Just because you're getting an, an update about a pre-app, that does not mean we have received a formal application yet. Yep.
Can we have any pre-app questions?
Sure, yeah.
So it allowed use, even though it's private and likely is just inexpensive car storage for an individual?
So museum is an allowed use in the downtown promenade?
You, right.
Office spaces would not be an allowed use in the downtown promenade.
But broadly, when we designed it for museums, we weren't thinking of car storage. We were thinking of.
It has, it has to have an open to the public, an open to.
Precisely, yeah. And the 12-foot roll-up doors, there is parking in front of those proposed doors. Would that be impacted theoretically?
Yeah, and he would have to do a curb cut is what was discussed at the pre-application. So there were some factors that were discussed at the pre-application meeting.
I was gonna say, the other one is, this applicant actually was given a lot of comments that this, this is allowed, this isn't allowed. And he actually came up with a second application that was reviewed recently, which will be in your January.
We'll see that in two weeks.
Yeah, for the same space.
Yeah. And I, the understanding is that it's still not fully developed.
Good.
Yeah. Still fleshing it out.
Yeah.
The project highlight is the Snohomish PUD number one. Kate, did you want to give an overview of this project? So this is, this project, we had a couple of inquiries from council members the end of last year. And so this has been an ongoing application. The first pre-application was in November of 2022. And the Snohomish PUD is looking at purchasing first airfield and constructing an administrative office, warehousing, loading dock, car wash or vehicle wash. It's a, basically the way they were explaining it is they would be consolidating, I believe it's three of their facilities into one. And so during this time, there was a lot of question about outdoor storage because they were gonna do a lay-down yard. This is the tourist commercial zone, which does not allow outdoor storage. So the applicants did a director's interpretation, which came back that no outdoor storage really is not permitted use here. That was appealed to the hearing examiner. The hearing examiner conferred with staff's determination. But while that was happening, code amendment had been recommended to clarify the zoning code. The council decided they did not want to pursue that, let the hearing examiner process play out. And so during the same time, we've had, was it five meetings with the PUD to move forward on this project. And so they actually are coming back tomorrow for a second pre-application meeting. And what they're trying to achieve, in addition to the development, is the process called a development agreement, is a contract between the city of Monroe and the developer. This is a quasi-judicial application, you know, once it officially comes in. So we can give you limited updates, such as an application that's come in, kind of the parameters. Covers it, yeah. That is the Snohomish PUD project. Thank you, Kate. Moving on to our project page, you will see there are a couple of new projects listed on here. One is under final plat review. The Curry Farms Phase 2 Final Short Plat. It's a two-lot short plat in the R4 zoning district. You'll notice that this is Phase 2 of Curry Farms. Curry Farms Phase 1 Final Plat was applied for in 2017, and that is a 23-lot plat. This is just two lots within that subdivision. I'm not sure why they did it in two phases. But this will complete that subdivision. There is also a new project listed under site plan review. You'll see the Ponderosa Pacific condominiums at 16096 174th Drive Southeast. This project is an application for site plan review for 11 townhouse units. This is located on the street just next door to Foxborough. And also listed on here is our count of how many applications. We had 58 applications received for land use permits this year and 50 land use permits issued in 2023. Do you have any questions about those new projects that are listed?
I do. Are any of them the same developers that did the other townhouses?
Ponderosa Pacific has the same architect as Foxborough, but it's not the same developers. All right. Onto building permits. For single-family, it's about the same for commercial TIs and for single families that were issued between November and December. And you'll see that the building department ended 2023 with 903 building permits issued. And they conducted just under 2,600 inspections. So they are very busy over there.
Don't, don't be overstepping.
We just finished our second round of interviews for permit techs. So I hope that we will have a new permit tech hired very soon. And we are in the second round of applications for the building inspector. So we haven't gotten a new building inspector hired yet, and hopefully we'll have a new building permit tech soon. Still a little shorthanded, but hopefully not for much longer. For code enforcement, the numbers, you can see, are pretty close between November and December, between opened cases and resolved. No real updates on what they've been up to over there. Business licenses, there were 59 new business license applications and 121 business license renewals in December. I accidentally listed one business on here twice, Victoria Style Salon, so I'm sorry about that. There's not two businesses with the same name opening. But these are our new businesses in town. Hickory Farms was short-lived, but at least they got a business license. And then, moving on, we have refreshed the comprehensive plan section. So Kate, did you want to give any updates there?
No, that, that one's pretty explanatory. Just reminding, the planning commission gave recognition to the city council on the land use scenarios at the end of last year. The council blessed those to move forward for additional analysis, which was the basis for the determination of significance, which is part of our environmental review process, which was issued last week. And again, on that, the next phase for the environmental review is the draft environmental impact statement that looks at all of the possible impacts of the full build-out proposal and what type of mitigation might be required. And then under the shoreline master plan periodic update, you'll see that it has been updated to list the findings of fact and conclusions of law was adopted by the planning commission at the January 8th, 2024 meeting. Under miscellaneous, you will also notice that the North 41 annexation has been updated to reflect that the North 41 annexation application was withdrawn at the end of 2023. And a revised application with a smaller annexation boundary has been received and is being processed. And we will update you as soon as we have more information available on that.
Yeah, I'm gonna follow up on, on two of these. Tomorrow night, actually, is a big night for our department at city council. Anita is presenting the shoreline master program amendments. And then Amy will be introducing the Monroe 30 annexation for that process. The first stage is to introduce it to the council. The council sets a meeting with the applicants in two weeks. At that time, they determine, are they gonna keep these boundaries? And if it will include indebtedness, which is if there were any outstanding bonds or fees, the annexation would have to be party to paying that off. I did also want to just give you a quick update on the Connor annexation. We've finally gotten through the 60% petition with the county assessor who had to confirm the signatures and legal description. So the next stage of that is taking it to the Snohomish County Founder Review Board, which I think Amy is the lead for that project as well. We're hoping to have that done in a couple of months. Yes.
Connor annexation, a resident-initiated?
Yes. And it's a single parcel.
Yep.
Adjacent to the high school.
So.
Yeah.
Those take a while. Because this was 2021.
21 or 22, yeah. On this one, it was really interesting because what was holding it up was the legal description. The, there, so when, when we annex land, the county's been really clear that you don't go to the center line, you have to take in the entire right-of-way. Then there was a question, because it's adjacent to State Route 522, does that also have? Then there was a question, because it's adjacent to State Route five twenty-two, does that also have to be included? So there was a, a little extra back and forth to get that clarified. I know it's strange, but.
I think it was twenty twenty-one, because I'm pretty sure it was on the first agenda that I, of the meeting, my first meeting.
It said tester between, there's a road.
Yes.
Before you get to.
Yes. Yeah, it, it got resolved, so.
Couple of years, two and a half years, or three, four years.
That's not normal, I'll be clear, that, that, that is not.
Do we know when things are annexed, if that's counting towards our housing goals?
It does.
Does anyone have any questions on the December report?
Thanks for remembering to bring that forward.
Yeah.
Appreciate it.
Sorry, it's a little late, better late than never.
Well, we were here two weeks ago.
Yeah.
Right on time.
That was another fiasco, no computer service.
We do what we can, right?
Guys need to start with the backup.
Is that the satellite one?
Okay, looks like we're ready for discussion. Running commissioners and staff, we'll start with our online folks, Bob?
No, thank you. No, no questions.
Liz?
Um, I don't, thanks staff for helping tonight. Appreciate everybody's help.
Kelsey? Bring in a guy who's done us, she attended the training session, and how great it was.
Oh, yes, um, well, we went through um the notes that we need to keep, which I had done that training like maybe four months ago, or not too long ago. So it was, it was um a good reminder of what we should be discussing and what we shouldn't. And um, yeah, I'm glad I went, I got some pizza, we had some Gino's Pizza, it was incredible.
Shout out.
Yeah, so, yeah, that was, it was good to see everyone, and I feel like that training, I learned a lot.
Thanks for attending. Randy?
I'm trying to rack my brain about any community events I've been at recently, and nothing's coming to mind, um, so I think I'll pass.
I'll go to the training on January thirtieth, and I agree, it was definitely a great reminder on stuff. I thought that was good, and um I believe this Saturday is the Chocolate Walk.
Downtown, but.
Yeah, so I'm, I'm, I'm having to do that here, I'm looking forward to that.
Good. No need?
Um, just thank you staff for all of the wonderful information that you continuously provide to us, and thanks for answering our questions. Um, aside from that, nothing for me today.
Thanks. Liz?
I really have a lot, I mean, we have some things that are coming up. I think that I already mentioned that, that really getting started on the, the annexation, which is now the North Four Thirty Annexation. And the project with the PUD moving forward, we're doing a pre-app with them. And one interesting thing is, as you've noticed, um, city halls is physically going away. And I think they tore down council chambers today.
They did.
Very quickly, I drove by one time and came back, it was gone. So there's a lot of stuff going on there, but, but it's put a little bit of a stress on, on the city in terms of finding meeting spaces. And we've been using this space, and we're gonna be doing our PUD pre-app meeting at the PUD, at the PUD conference room. And so it's been, it's been a little bit of a, of a.
Adventure.
Been adventure, yes.
There's no conflict there, meaning like your pre-app applicant in there has some business, no?
No, I mean, it's not.
It's public.
Yeah, so if, and, and then there's no.
Funded by the taxpayers.
And there's no decisions being made.
Yeah.
And so it might be a little bit different if you were holding a public hearing where a decision was happening. It's a good question, that's all.
Um, I just have one thing, I apologize, I have your certificates from your training, and I forgot to put it at my desk, so you'll get them at your next meeting.
I assume you're picking up Ben Franklin with his brain? I'd like a, a nice three or so inch man from around there. Wood, metal, color, yeah, you have to, you have to have standards, you know?
That's all I have.
Okay. Hannah?
Um, I don't have anything besides, two days ago was Chinese New Year, the year of the dragon. So let's all be very brave this year, as we work on the comprehensive plan. harness that energy. That's all I have.
Fantastic, great. Okay.
You have anything? Ready to go?
We've already talked enough, I think, I just wanna thank everybody for attending the train session, it was great to see people in person. It was well-run, well-done. It's a lot of information. Appreciate it.
It was easier to do it in person than online.
Indeed.
I, I agree with that, like, that was way better than when I did it.
In my house.
And I have pizza.
I mean, I have pajamas. I move, we adjourn the meeting.
Carla second in, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Put your phones.
Before eight P M, that almost never happens.
Oh, wow, you are, look at you, Steve.
I know, that's why, I called it out now.
I'm still not sure you're not gonna have extra meetings later this year.